This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of the town of North Haven.
Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our February North Haven Board of Selectmen meeting. I'm Mike Frida, joined as always by our second selectman, Mr. William Piper, and our third selectwoman, Ms. Sally Bullemi. Thank you again for joining us. I'd like to ask everyone to stand for our pledge of allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Item number two, any public comments to tonight's agenda? Item number three, the approval of the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes from January 5th, 2023.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item number four.
And then I'll, I'll motion to approve the Board of Selectmen Budget Workshop Meeting Minutes of January 9th, 2023.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Item number five.
Yes, I will make a motion for the approval of the Board of Selectmen's Special Meeting Minutes of January 26th, 2023.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any other discussion?
I would urge folks who didn't attend the meeting to watch it. I thought it was a very informative meeting. Thank you. It was about the Affordable Housing Plan.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item number six, we're going to dispense with slides tonight, but we do have a very important public service announcement that I'm going to have Valerie talk about tonight.
Thank you, Mike. We just wanted to bring to everyone's attention that this month, with the generosity of Stop &amp; Shop here in North Haven, our local Stop &amp; Shop, they have decided that for their, it's called a Blooming for Good program, and they choose different benefactors to donate funds to based on sales of their flowers. So this month, the month of February, they are donating for every bouquet purchased, and it's, it's a specific bouquet, and it's labeled Blooming for Good, it's $10.99. For every bouquet that is purchased at the local Stop &amp; Shop, they will donate $1 to the community services food bank. So we're very appreciative to Stop &amp; Shop for their generosity, and we want to encourage everyone to please stop by and consider purchasing a bouquet to help other families here in North Haven with the food bank. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Val. Before we move off, item number six, in perhaps next month, but definitely the following month as I see it, I'll be giving an update. I have a State of the Town address that's sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce, and I'm hoping to make a major announcement in 60 days of a, of a brand-new, very well-respected, very popular retail store coming to town. So that'll be hopefully in 60 days. All right, so starting with item number seven, we have a lot of town business tonight, ladies and gentlemen, to talk about, a lot of procedural issues. I'm going to turn it over to Sally and to Bill to read the resolutions for us, okay? Sally, would you like to start?
Yes, I will read number seven. We are to consider and act upon a resolution authorizing First Selectman Michael J. Frida as the chief elected official of the town of North Haven to submit an application to the State Department of Energy and Environmental Protection for a $250,000, for $250,000 in order to undertake an Urban Act grant and to execute an assistance agreement for the Bailey Road Baseball Field Improvements Project.
Okay, so, let me explain what this is. How's that?
He's fine.
I'll explain what this is. So, anytime we see these resolutions, ladies and gentlemen, these are grants that are grants that are outside of the town budget, and these grants are designed to help improve infrastructure in town. In this case, Bailey Field. And during the summer, spring and summer, all the way through the fall, that field is heavily used. So this grant that we've been fortunate to receive will help refurbish the field in terms of putting dugouts in, but it looks like it's going to be dugouts, you know, having played the sport for all the years I've played, not the sunken dugouts, dugouts that will have a cover over them on both the first base and the third base side. The backstop there is well over 70 years old. So the backstop will be replaced for a more regulation size and style baseball backstop. There'll be some field improvements there, and we're hoping there's enough money to help with the, out in center field, beyond center field, there's a practice all-purpose field there that a lot of, sometimes the football team has used. We're hoping that there's enough money here to help, help remediate, if you will, or improve that practice field. So it's all very positive at a field that for generations has been part of the fabric of North Haven's baseball community, North Haven's sports community, and other recreational activity there. So that's what this grant's about.
I just, for purposes of clarification, because last year we had the $3.5 million bonding for improvements at Vannacore Field, the track, and it did include some improvements on Bailey Road, but this, this, the field you're talking about is the one exactly at the corner of the entrance to the middle school and Bailey Road.
That's right.
Where, in my day, the varsity played their, their games. So that is not, none of that, that field was not in any way part of that $3.5 million. There was a reference to Bailey Road, a water connection, but that was further down. The, that's the field where, if you go over the bridge at the, at the athletic site on Maple Avenue, there's a bridge that crosses a stream, and, and there's fields there that kind of front Bailey Road. So that had something to do with the $3.5 million. I didn't want people to hear Bailey Road and think this was part of that project. This is a completely different locale.
Exactly. Separate and distinct.
Right, fine. Well, I am certainly in favor of you applying for any grant that will help us out.
Okay, so, any other discussion? And before we get into the resolve. All right, would you like to read the resolve, someone?
Thank you. You know, based on, you know, Sally's description and Mike's further explanation, item number eight is resolved that the town of North Haven may enter into, with, and deliver to the State of Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection any and all documents which it deems be necessary or appropriate for an Urban Act grant, $250,000 for the Bailey Road Baseball Field Improvements Project located at 55 Bailey Road in North Haven, Connecticut, and be it further resolved that Michael J. Frida, as First Selectman of the town of North Haven, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the town of North Haven, and to do and perform all acts and things which he deems necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents. Michael J. Frida now holds the office of First Selectman, and further, he has held the office since December 1st, 2009. So I'll make a motion for that, for that resolution.
I'll, I'll second the resolution as read.
All right, motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Is it required that it say that you're the current holder and how long you've held it? I've never seen that in a resolution for a grant before.
I think only because it's an urban grant, I think it, I think that's part of it. Because I was surprised to see that myself. We never really see that, right?
We've done it before.
We have done it before.
We have done it before.
Okay.
All right, well, I seconded the resolution as read.
All right.
As we know from the past, it's better maybe sometimes to have too much instead of too little.
Okay.
These are the resolutions that the state gives to us.
Right.
Like, they dictate what it should contain, so we just go along with it.
Well, I know it was a state one, because they're famous for saying, "For all acts and things," which you know is, it's weird, it's not very specific, but I will, again, I have no problem with you performing things, Michael, if it gets us money. So, yeah, why don't we call for a vote?
All right, very good. So we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, Sally, you have a nine.
Now we are to consider and act upon a resolution confirming the town of North Haven's commitment and participation in a regional household hazardous waste collection center. Do you have any comments about it? And then I'll read the resolution there.
So every three years, I think it is, that this is required of us by the Regional Water Authority. And what this is about is, this is part of a regional consortium, if you will. You know, as two-time chairman of the Regional Council of Governments here, which includes 15 cities and towns in the greater New Haven area, we have the ability to offer our residents to go down to Long Wharf at the RWA and dispose of hazardous materials that we can't pick up as, in terms of our municipal waste or our recycling. And that can be old paint, that can be pesticides, disinfectants that normally cannot be put into municipal trash. So this is a great service for not only North Haven, but also the entire region who participates. And it starts in May, it runs until October, and it's really a valuable asset for those people that have materials that they can't normally dispose of. And tonight, the resolution is on the agenda only because every few years we're required to renew that agreement, and it's a positive thing, ladies and gentlemen.
Yeah, I participated in it. I know they ask folks from each town in the cog to, to send folks down there to help direct traffic and stuff, and so I've participated and also have gotten rid of some stuff there. So I will certainly support the renewal. Every three years, we do it, so, Bill?
Oh yeah, I've gone several times, my, my family, you know, my wife and I, and our family, you know, and, you know, it's very well-run, it's very well-organized, and it's a great, you know, service that we, we have for all the recycling that we try to do here in town. There are things that we can't do. And if I, you know, beside, I think, the things that Mike mentioned, I think, you know, if you change your own motor oil, I think they take motor oil, you know, or if you've got stale gasoline or something like that left over, if I remember right. The thing that actually, you know, I think is extremely harmful and you never should throw away, if my memory is correct, and I have a box of used, of no longer useful, because they're dead, batteries, you don't want to put that in the landfill or into the garbage. You want to be able to take that someplace, and I, my memory is correct, this is where it goes. So this is great that, that they, that the South Central Connecticut Regional Water Authority has, you know, done this for so many years.
All right, any other questions?
No.
All right.
I think we've considered it, under nine, so I'll do 10. Whereas the South Central Connecticut Regional Water Authority, as agent for the South Central Regional Council of Governments and participating municipalities, has undertaken the permitting construction and operation of a regional facility for the collection of household hazardous waste and conditionally exempt small quantity generator business waste as its, at its headquarters at 90 Sergeant Drive in New Haven, and whereas the municipalities participating in the facility are able to have residents drop off their household hazardous wastes on Saturday mornings from 9:00 a.m. until noon, and conditionally exempt small quantity generators, deliver business waste on Saturday morning by appointment from 7:00 to 8:30 a.m. from spring through fall for proper processing, transportation, and disposal, whereas the facility is owned, managed, and operated under the supervision of the South Central Connecticut Regional Water Authority for the benefit of participating municipalities. Now therefore, be it resolved by the town of North Haven that the town of North Haven declares its commitment to continue participation in the Regional Household Hazardous Waste Collection Center for a minimum three-year period, July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2026, and confirms its intent to contribute financially for the operation, processing, transportation, and disposal of household hazardous waste on behalf of its residents. The town of North Haven authorizes its First Selectman to enter into this agreement with the South Central Connecticut Regional Water Authority for the operation of the facility. Such agreement will permit the authority to act as its agent to maintain the facility, contract with a vendor for the transportation and disposal of the hazardous waste, to receive financial support from grant sources, to enter into agreements with other municipalities, and to operate the facility. Invoicing will be based on a two-part formula. One, annual operational costs are based on the number of one and two family housing units in North Haven, and two, annual transportation and waste disposal costs are prorated by residents' usage. This resolution shall be effective July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2026. I will move that resolution as read.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that resolution that Sally made.
All right, good job in reading the resolution. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item.
Item number 11 is to consider and act upon a resolution recommending to the town meeting the approval of the construction of the new bandstand on the North Haven Town Green at 19 Church Street.
All right, so let me explain this. You know, it's been my goal for two years to, for the concert series every summer on the green, to remove the showmobile and have a permanent bandstand structure. And in addition to hosting the concerts and hosting the bands who would perform on that bandstand, I've also been working very closely with the arts group here in town regarding putting plays, performances with actors and musicals on the green, and that bandstand could be utilized. The reason this is on the agenda tonight is that originally I had the cost of this cleared from the federal government for the ARPA funds. But, you know, I've worked closely with Lynn Sadowski here in this government. We work side-by-side on a lot of issues, and she asked me if she wanted me to approve her exploring a grant on this, which I did. And we did get the grant. So the grant is about $351,000, I believe it is. It's a 20% match for the town. So if you take 20% of $351,000, the town's match is $70,000, which, in working with the federal government, I could apply that to ARPA. So in effect, we reduce the ARPA expenses or the ARPA expenditures through the utilization of the grant. And this grant, the $351,000, will include approximately $175,000 to $190,000 for the bandstand, but also will allow us, this grant, to repair and replace two very important playscapes in the back of the rec center. So that's why this is on the agenda tonight, because it's a derivative of a grant. Another example of improving infrastructure through this grant this time, and also creating a better experience on the green for those concert-goers in the summer, and for those concert-goers watching. We're adding more concerts this year. And we're also reviewing the bands, and I guarantee you, much like last summer, we'll have some of the big tribute bands. And ladies and gentlemen, we attract thousands of people on that green every Tuesday night, and we're grateful to the sponsors who help us underwrite the cost. Those sponsors, members of the business community. That is the overview.
Okay. I just have a couple of questions. First, as far as the construction of the bandstand, will it be at the location where that trailer?
Yes.
Used to be?
Yes.
Yeah, because there's this kind of dance floor press there.
Yes.
All right, so it'll be that, that location. And since you're planning to use some of this grant to do these playscapes behind the rec center, should that be included in the resolution? Because the resolution says just a new bandstand.
So, Val, go ahead.
Yeah, the, the part of the bandstand has to go, be approved by town meeting based on Section 8-24 under Municipal Improvements, because it's a new structure.
Okay.
But the playscapes are just being enhanced. I don't think they're being totally, like, newly constructed, so...
So that, right, because we, we do lots of playscapes without having to get town meeting approval.
Right, and this is a permanent structure.
Right, okay, I got you.
That was not existing prior to.
Okay.
So it's always a gray area on 8-24. It's a matter of interpretation. We could have interpreted it that because it goes through the Planning and Zoning Commission, we didn't need to do a town meeting. But we're always going to err on the side of caution. So we're going to go with the town meeting in addition to it running, being run through Planning and Zoning, to err on the side of caution. And, you know, I'd be very surprised, ladies and gentlemen, if anybody voted it down at the town meeting. This is a great addition to the town, so...
P&amp;Z already did approve it.
They already approved it, right.
And, yes.
Yeah, I, no, I'm not questioning the merits. I was just questioning, you know, you said what it was going to be used for, and then you added something that's not here. So it's just, you're adding extra information about what the grant is being used for. And we're only voting on the bandstand at the town meeting because of its nature as a permanent structure.
Right.
And therefore, erring on the side of caution, a town meeting should be the way to go. Okay.
Right, it's not the funding, it's the structure.
Yeah, gotcha. So, shall I, I'll read 12? I'll, I'll make the resolution?
Sure.
Resolve that the Board of Selectmen recommend to the town meeting that the construction of a new bandstand on the North Haven Green at 19 Church Street be approved.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Aye, thank you. Next item.
Number, next item on the agenda is to consider and act upon a resolution recommending to the town meeting the approval of a proposed tax agreement between the town of North Haven and North Haven Solar One LLC relative to the development of an electric generating facility on land located at 122 Mill Road, North Haven.
All right, so let me provide an overview on this. So the broad overview is that the archdiocese of Hartford and the Catholic cemeteries have, have determined that there are certain parcels within the cemeteries that are unsuitable for burial. And as a result of that, and the need to generate revenue for the archdiocese and/or the cemeteries, the Archdiocese of Hartford has engaged in a endeavor, in an initiative, that involves working with various solar companies, in this case here, Varaji. And the concept is designed for the cemetery to enter into a land lease with the solar company. And once that is structured and determined, which has nothing to do with the town, then the Siting Council, the State of Connecticut Siting Council, has to have a hearing to rule on whether or not that solar park, if you will, or that solar initiative and those solar panels will be approved. That is, once again, something that the town does not weigh in on. The Siting Council in the State of Connecticut oversees these constructions or these decisions. It supersedes local planning and zoning for 169 cities and towns within the State of Connecticut. As a byproduct of that, as all these projects are happening across the state, the towns enter into what's called a pilot agreement, which is what we're voting on tonight. And this pilot agreement has been presented to the town by the company, and it's a model that's based on a similar model that all municipalities have offered to them. There's a formula that involves megawatts. This facility will be, or this solar panel addition will be 1.65 megawatts on a certain portion of the cemetery property. By contrast, about four or five years ago, on the other side of the cemetery, that was finalized in July, I believe, of 2020, that was roughly a five-megawatt facility, of which the town entered into a pilot program agreement that was ratified at a town meeting. This is no different than what happened two and a half years ago. And this pilot tonight is a pilot that generates about $8,600 a year over the course of many, many years. By contrast, that $8,600 represents about five or six times what the property is currently being taxed at, which is about $1,800. So tonight, this is a resolution that goes to the town meeting for the town meeting to vote on the pilot program. Nothing else, the pilot, just like we did two and a half years ago. And this board has to ratify that to send it to a town meeting. And that's what the overview is.
Which is really the tax agreement.
Yeah, it's a tax agreement.
You know, and this is a, and I, and I looked through the documentation and looked at the proposal and everything previously, I think just like the previous ones, there's, you know, this is something that is centralized at the state level, I think, as you mentioned, that the Connecticut Siting Council has responsibility, very much like the state has responsibility for utilities, you know, which I think is beyond our expertise as a municipality from a planning and zoning standpoint. So this is all done at the state level, and this is all ties into the projects, not only here, but throughout the state that might be similar, related, that relate to electricity or other utilities. And again, I just, again, looking from the documentations and everything that, you know, that's been provided regarding the, you know, the project's been approved, I mean, it's, it's, I think it's in keeping with environmental concerns, with, you know, any, any issues regarding, you know, native artifacts, also visibility concerns in terms of any of the neighbors that might, you know, that might border the project, and all that's been, I think, in terms of the site plan and everything, been approved, you know, by the state. It's kind of out, outside of what, you know, what we've done. But again, if I look at the document, it seems like there's a definite process in terms of petition and a public meeting and everything that's already been carried through by the state, just like the one we saw in 2020, that I was, that I think we approved previously.
This tax agreement that goes to the town meeting, there's another part to this that leads to the tax agreement. Back a couple of years ago, the State of Connecticut threw an executive order, there was a decarbonization of electricity from the various providers, UI and Eversource. So these solar initiatives tie into that gubernatorial executive order, I think it was Executive Order 3, I think it was. So, to the company's credit, the solar company's credit, they publicly announced this to the surrounding residents. They will entertain questions, they'll work on a home-by-home basis to increase vegetation or listen to the residents' concerns. So both, this company in particular has done a very nice job, at least in a public outreach. The town's only responsibility in this is what we're doing right here, and that is to send this to a town meeting so the public can vote on the tax agreement.
Right, they, they, they need the tax agreement in order to be classified, is what they want it to be classified as. Yeah, this is, as you both said, our, our second time dealing with the, the Siting Council, and, yeah, they do kind of step in the role that normally our planning and zoning, and in this case, our Wetlands, inland wetlands commission would, would handle, because this project is 300 feet from the muddy river. And of course, I'm never going to vote against anything that, whenever we're recommending anything to go to the town meeting, I always am in favor of it going to a town meeting. You know, you're going to hear in, in the resolution the address 122 Mill Road. Mill Road is a long... the address one twenty-two Mill Road. Mill Road is a long road. It goes from Spring Road to Clintonville. So one twenty-two is kind of near the intersection of Rourke Road. And this, this, um, um, is on the east side of Mill Road. Um, the, um, closest streets are, well, there are, uh, residential homes nearby, um, I think Driesen Drive South and Mill Road. And I read the materials, and I believe one, um, one resident had, had some questions. Uh, it doesn't talk about what the questions were, or were they, whether they were addressed. So I would encourage anyone, I want to take this opportunity to encourage anyone in that area to attend the meeting if they have any questions. They might have missed the notice of the hearing. They might have missed the notice they received in the mail. I, I don't know if it goes by certified mail. When planning, uh, when something goes before planning and zoning, the, the developer has to send everything by certified mail to people in the area. I don't know, you know, what type of notice the neighbors got. So if you're in the area, I would urge you to attend the meeting and, and ask your questions and be satisfied. Um, uh, you know, I, I supported the last one, and I'm generally satisfied with, um, the, the steps that I saw in here to minimize impact on wetlands and wildlife. Um, there are a few acres of trees coming down. Um, uh, but they're also putting up trees to help buffer against neighboring.
That's right.
Homes. So I was pleased to see that. Um, so overall, I thought they addressed the issues. They're concerned about turtles a lot in here. Um, so, you know, I, I, I don't have a problem with them taking steps necessary to protect the turtles. Um, so I just would recommend, yeah, I'm going to certainly vote if, in favor of, um, sending this, recommending that this go to a town meeting for the approval. We are getting twenty years of tax payments at eight thousand plus per year, which is far more than we would be getting. So from a financial standpoint, it's good, but the neighbors may have more concerns than just...
But you got to keep in mind, that we have to keep in mind.
Yeah.
That the questions, we can't answer the questions about the Siting Council.
Yeah.
We can only answer questions about the tax agreement.
Right.
Because this is a done deal. It's, the Siting Council's already...
It's, it's, it's been approved. I know. But, but, um, I, you know, some, someone may want to vote against the tax agreement.
That's true, yeah.
And its impact on this.
That's true.
Right.
But I want to...
Because I don't think they'll do it without...
But my only point is, we're not prepared to discuss the intricacies of what went on at the Siting Council, because we weren't there. It supersedes the town. So, uh, any questions that come up, Sally's right, they could vote against the tax agreement. But, um, this meeting is specifically to vote on the tax agreement, not the project. That's already been approved by the Siting Council.
Right. It has. Yep. And as I said, I, I was impressed with the steps spelled out in here to address a lot of issues that I, I had concerns about. And I feel very optimistic that, that, that those steps, uh, will be effectuated and, and minimize impacts. You know, I'm not...
So I would say that the Siting Council...
What I'm making clear, yeah.
That the Siting Council would have, under their, the, the approved petition, would have a responsibility, if people did have concerns, to actually make sure those concerns were addressed.
Right.
If it wasn't in keeping with the approved petition.
Right.
See, so, you know, I thi, I think from our sta, standpoint, as Mike said, it's only a tax agreement.
Yeah.
The LLC that we're signing the tax agreement would be happy if we didn't approve it, because then they wouldn't have to pay the eight thousand dollars a year.
Right.
So we're not really, you know, that still wouldn't benefit the, any concerns that people might have regarding environmental...
I just think people should be aware. Yeah. I understand.
Environmental issues.
I just think people should be aware of this, and they live in the area. You know, they should come. But personally, I, I'm going to recommend it, and I think that all of the, uh, issues have been satisfactorily addressed. And so I support it from that standpoint, and I certainly support, uh, the income stream.
Then I would, I would say that the state of Connecticut and the Siting Council has a responsibility.
Yeah.
To make sure that, uh, what they've approved actually happens correctly.
Right. Right.
You know? So, yeah, I think that's where, you know, somebody did have concerns with, you know, I think, uh, that's the body to go back to, to say, listen, uh, you know, you, you mentioned things like wildlife and drainage and, um, you know, remediation in terms of wetlands and visibility, all those things. You know, they have an obligation to, to, to do correctly based on the approved plan.
Right. But I, I guess I just want people to know, based on where it is, they may have had concerns about environmental issues like I did, and they are very specifically, and in my opinion, adequately addressed.
Yeah.
But if you live in the area, you may want to come. That's all I'm trying to say.
Absolutely.
And I hope people do, you know, for exactly that reason.
Right.
Yeah. Because we want it to be done, you know, done right, not only for, you know, for, um, for the project and, you know, the diocese, you know, this land for the diocese, the developer, and I think this is good for the state of Connecticut in terms of renewable energy, but also for the people who live there, like you say, in our town. You're exactly right.
Yep. Okay.
And hopefully this will, this will be, and, and then there is, uh, you know, uh, as Mike said, some additional taxes, even though it's not a significant amount, still is more than we're getting, you know, based on the nature of the property currently.
Absolutely. Uh, so I will, uh, do fourteen. I will make the following motion. Resolve that the Board of Selectmen recommend to the town meeting that the proposed tax agreement between the town of North Haven and North Haven Solar One LLC relative to the development of an electric generating facility on land located at one twenty-two Mill Road, North Haven, be approved.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second, um, that motion.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. We'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next.
And then in keeping with, uh, the previous resolutions, number fifteen is to call for a special town meeting to be held Monday, February twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three in the upstairs conference room, number one, North Haven Memorial Town Hall, eighteen Church Street, North Haven, Connecticut, at six P M., to consider and act upon the following. To consider and act upon a resolution by the Board of Selectmen recommending to the town meeting the approval for the construction of a new bandstand on the North Haven Town Green at nineteen Church Street, and to consider and act upon a resolution by the Board of Selectmen recommending to the town meeting the approval of proposed tax agreement between the town of North Haven and North Haven Solar One LLC relative to the development of an electric generating facility on land located at one twenty-two Mill Road, North Haven.
I'll second that call.
All right. Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item.
We have, uh, item sixteen, resignations and appointments. I will move for the appointment of Linda A. Nielsen, fifteen Saichem Drive, to the Community Services Commission, term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
I'll second Linda's appointment.
All right. Uh, Linda reached out for us. She'd like to get involved. We had a resignation there. Um, so Kim Rossi resigned. So, uh, thank you, Lynn, for willing to, be willing to serve. And Kim, thank you for your service on that commission. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next.
Uh, next, um, I'll motion, um, for the appointment of Newpar Garg. I hope I, uh, said, uh, his name correctly. And I apologize if I didn't.
Her name.
Pardon?
Her.
It's a her.
It's a female.
Female.
New, Newport.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, her, uh, her name. I...
Yeah. Dr. Garg is female.
I apologize. Um, for the appointment of Newpar Garg, um, one fourteen Upper State Street to the Commission on Aging, term to expire December thirty-first, uh, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
All right. Uh, thank you, Newpar, for, uh, being willing to serve. And, uh, thank you, Sandra, Sandra Mastriano, for serving all the years on that commission. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will move for the appointment of Robert Brancato, one, um, nineteen fifty-three Whitney Avenue, apartment C two, to the Board of Ethics, term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
I'll second, um, his appointment.
And Bob, thank you for your willingness to serve also. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, um, I'll motion for the reappointment of Cheryl Genowick, one oh one Knollwood Road, uh, to the Open Space Advisory Committee with the recommendation of the Inland Wetlands Commission, term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Cheryl, thank you. I know you've been on the commission for a long time, so we appreciate your service. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item.
Well, number seventeen, we have bond releases. We have three of them. I'll do the first one. Okay, Bill?
Yeah, please do.
We have I eighteen dash seventeen, three eighty-one State Street. The original amount, the amount of the original bond is thirty-five hundred. The current balance of the bond is thirty-five hundred. So I will move that we release the entire bond balance of thirty-five hundred with the recommendation of the Inland Wetlands Commission and the Town Engineer.
I'll second that bond release.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Call those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, next bond release is for, um, uh, number one twenty-two dash zero nine, six, six, uh, six, sixty-six Todd Drive South.
That's I twenty-two. I think you have to say I twenty...
Oh, I'm sorry. I twenty-two. Instead of one twenty-two. I have my glasses on, and I still didn't read it right. Um, maybe I should take them off, and I could read it correctly.
I can give you a tip.
Pardon?
When it's inland wetlands, it starts with an I. When it's planning and zoning, it starts with a P.
With a P.
So, for future.
So, well, thank you for, for letting me know about it, which I should remember for all, all the times I've read these bond releases. So, one more time, let's, uh, I'll make a, uh, back to the top. I'll make a motion, uh, to, for a bond release for, uh, number I twenty-two dash zero nine, sixty-six Todd Drive South. Amount of original bond, three thousand five hundred dollars. Current balance of bond, three thousand five hundred dollars. Release the entire bond balance of three thousand five hundred dollars with the recommendation of the Inland, uh, Wetlands Commission and the Town Engineer.
I'll second that release.
All right. Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye. And regarding I sixteen dash ten, one thirteen dash one seventeen, Upper State Street, the amount of the original bond is five thousand. The current balance of the bond is five thousand. I'll make a motion to release the entire bond balance of five thousand dollars with the recommendation of the Inland Wetlands Commission and the Town Engineer.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Do we have a motion and a second? Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item.
Just, uh, I was just noticing, though, in the bond releases, um, did we have, just making sure that we had, oh, I, I see the paperwork now, just, uh, for the, uh, release we just did. Okay. So I think we had all them, we had all the paperwork. So, yeah, the last, uh, I think the next item on the agenda is property tax refunds?
It is.
And, uh, after looking at, looking at those, um, I'll make a motion to approve those refunds.
Second.
All right. And we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So, before we get to public comment, the next meeting of this board is Thursday, March second, here at six thirty at North Haven's Memorial Town Hall. Item number twenty, public comment.
Can you bring a microphone to them?
Fal, can you bring the mic to Ray?
No, no. I, I, I'll get it.
Okay.
They think I'm alive. The first thing I'd like to do is to apologize to the board. Um, I'm rapidly losing my voice due to my illness, and, uh, I need to take a sip of water in order to be able to speak. Uh, I also may have to sit down during this because I just can't stand up that long. Uh, no disrespect is intended. Please know it's just a function of my illness. Um, this is all my opinion. But because what else is a Board of Selectmen meeting for, except to speak to the government, based on fifty years of residency, talk with hundreds of people, a lot of water's gone under the bridge, and to give my opinion. I apologize that I have to read it, but again, my illness has severely affected my memory, and I don't want to miss any points that I want to make. This will probably be my final appearance before the Board of Selectmen meeting due to my fatal illness. I grow weaker. The paralysis of my left side increases, and my capacity to do anything at all diminish daily. I also am losing my voice as my illness is attacking my vocal cords. The good news, Mike, I probably won't be able to speak very soon. Um, over my fifty years of residency, I have come before many of these meetings. Wesner Gott and Walter Garage didn't have them. Kevin Copens started open meetings. Janet McCarthy, McCarthy rather, and now Mike Frieda, uh, are holding these meetings. The number of second and third selectmen are too numerous to mention. I have done so because I believe that it is the duty of any good citizen to inform the elected leadership of their government, of the town, uh, of the citizens' thoughts, and to praise the good, criticize, um, I'm sorry, lost my voice. The, praise the good, criticize the bad, and try it in and expose all the ugly, all according to their own individual beliefs and points of view, and to remind said leadership that they are not the government, but simply have been accorded the honor and privilege of being the caretakers of the public trust, regardless of their political party and agenda. So for, so for my final time at bat, I considered long and hard, on the best to express my thoughts and give my opinion. I consider the famous Mike Frieda bus tour, reminding people how I remember when the BMW dealership was a drive-in movie, how the Jerry Lewis Theater brought together the concept of dinner and a movie, and when Yubie's Hobbies, that fostered creativity and imagination in youngsters, not video GameStop, was the desired location for boys and girls. Or maybe I could talk about the wonderful Windsor shop for the Christmas presents or a birthday card, the rustic oak, and/or the old on Broadway, and how Sally and I missed those fine and delicious meals served in a friendly atmosphere. I could talk about how the, how the landscape of the town has changed, especially Washington Avenue, whose landscape has changed more often than the average politician flip-flops on the issues. But no, I had to return to my original promise that has always been the five critical issues that have long faced the town and give my opinion. And it is now my intention to do so. So, no particular order, here goes. One, whatever rule, regulation, ordinance, or charter, I couldn't find it, says that the top three elected officials can't speak to one another except on a Board of Selectmen meeting, is stupid, ridiculous, and defies the laws of good judgment and common sense. I guess whatever administration enacted this principle meant well at the time, but times change. Welcome to two thousand twenty-three. Can you imagine the consequences of the top three executives of corporations couldn't speak to one another? Or, God forbid, the top three officers of a military unit couldn't speak before a ballot? Time to change this ridiculous and outdated circumstance... couldn't speak before a ballot? Time to change this ridiculous and outdated circumstance in order that the town's business may be conducted efficiently and with all but unified political input regardless of which party may be in power. Two, I am a registered independent voter. I vote for the person, not for the party, and I stand in good company of the majority of citizens of our town, but I feel compelled to openly and publicly call to task the North Haven Democratic Party. This party, by their complete and utter failure to very often field an opposing candidate in elections, and when they do, for failing to support their candidate both with involvement and financially, is tragic and wrong. The pillar of democracy is choice. Without choice, democracy becomes anarchic, defining the free and open discussion of ideas, sorry, design, the free and open discussion of ideas and political ideologies. By often failing to field and support a candidate, the Democrats have undermined this pillar of a vibrant democ- a vibrant democracy. Democracy also does not collapse or implode all at once. Instead, it is whittled away a little at a time due to apathy. Millions upon millions of American men and women, be included, have lived, have lived under conditions that Iraq would find despicable. We fought, fled, died, or almost died for this amazing tenet of democracy called choice. The fact that this town is a one-party dominated one is a crime. Democrats have undermined a basic privilege of democracy, choice. Perhaps instead of constantly finding fault with what and how things are being done, Democrats should field the candidate with ideas on how and why to do things better. You have an obligation, indeed you have a duty, to field the competent, supported candidate for every single office. No candidate, even the one in the character of Jesus, Gandhi, or Saint Thomas More, or the abilities of Reverend Ron Brown or Bill Gates, should go unopposed for any office. Do your duty to support democracy. Democrats, I simply cannot understand why you failed to offer a candidate for every office, or how you can justify not doing so. I call upon the citizens of North Haven to hold the Democratic Party accountable, indeed liable, to field the candidate for every single elected office in this town, and restore and uphold the basic democratic principle of choice. Number three, economic development. Certainly no one in their right mind can find any flow with a job like Frieda and his administration has done in economic development. Magnificent and amazing are two words that come to mind, and the result of maintaining of taxes at a level that far exceeds any surrounding town is extremely commendable and not without notice. All props and kudos to that. However, all that being said, it has come with a cost. For countless years, North Haven has resisted becoming a Hartford, New Haven, or Stanford. We like being a quiet little bedroom community for those cities, for those cities. One only has to remember the sound defeat of the proposed North Haven law of a few years back to ratify that feeling. Also, excessive economic development brings with it traffic, crime, risk of capital fires, increased need for E and P services, and the possible blighting of other areas of town. When my wife and I retired, we had the option of living anywhere we wanted, to include owning property in two other states. We chose North Haven because it was what it was. You could get most goods and services you wanted, and those you couldn't were but a short car, a short car, a short car ride away to Hammond or Marin. I caution our citizens not to overdevelop this wonderful town into becoming something we don't want it to be. A small increase in taxes would be well worth it. Number four, I for one am tired of the budget of the town of North Haven being held hostage year after year by the Board of Education and the Economic Department. I remember several years when multiple budget referendums had to be held costing thousands of dollars because of the excessive appetite for cash from the Board of Education and the Economic Department. I am old enough, and perhaps stupid enough, to think that the formula for a good education was a participating active student plus a dedicated teacher plus an involved parent equals a good education. The money played a secondary role in the process. That way, that was the way it was. That's the way it should be now, and the way we all should strive for it to be in the future. I also think that the Economic Department should be held at the same standards as the rest of working America. That being, if you want more money and/or promotion, you have to prove you're worth it. Not give me more money and maybe I'll prove I'm worth it. No more putting the cart before the horse. Therefore, I advocate bifurcating the budget. Let the Board of Education and the Economic Department show higher test scores, increased graduation rates, and students with increased basic abilities in the good old three Rs. Let's remember the good educational system teaches one how to think, not what to think, and a good education teaches one where to look, but not what to see. Good education doesn't quench the thirst for knowledge. Good education instead creates the thirst for knowledge. Let's remember one more thing. I'm sorry. Let's remember one more thing to answer the Board of Education and the Economic Department when they cry out, "The children, the children." Maybe they should remember that while imparting a good education indeed comes first, they should also remember that they have an obligation to maintain their spending at a level where the tax rate is low enough to allow the students and the children the opportunity to live in this great town after graduation without having to pay high taxes for education, making it impossible for a first-time homeb- homebuyer to live here as they begin their lives as adults. Bifurcating the budget to make education stand alone and prove, rather than demand, the need for money just makes good, basic, common sense. Five, last but not least, the ever-growing economic development in this town has too long neglected and failed to account for public safety. I have researched on the web, two sites dealing with public safety, National Fire Protection Association and the National Chiefs of Police Association, and both are public service departments by their standards are woefully lacking in personnel, training, and equipment. Our two public service departments have two fine, even great chiefs, Kevin Glenn at the Police Department and Paul Janishevsky at the Fire Department. Both are forward-looking and operational, and what we Marines call young, gung-ho, and hard-charging, but both are hamstrung by lack of proper funding. Time to end this unsafe and threatening condition and do it now. Economic development, wonderful as it is, demands public safety. Over the fifty, I'm sorry. Over the fifty years I've held residency in this wonderful town, I've attended many, many Board of Selectmen and other public meetings to express my thoughts and beliefs. I have served on boards and committees and had the honor and privilege of writing along with Jim Poe, the town attorney. She's a gem, don't lose her. I really enjoyed working with her. A town ordinance for the post-Vietnam memorial and founded, along with my amazing wife for fifty-two years, the North Haven Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Program. And I did so to the best of my limited abilities and talents, but always tried to give a hundred and ten percent despite my shortcomings. I did so because I thoroughly and truly believe that it is the duty of every citizen to act and re-participate in government. For government is not any administration, not any political party, not any government, but government is of the people, by the people, and for the people. Therefore, to allow any administration or any political party to rule without the input and consent of the government is contrary to every basic tenet of the framers of our Constitution. I note with both sorrow and concern the ever-declining attendance at the Board of Selectmen Meeting and other public venues. I remember a time when Board of Selectmen Meetings were standing room-only, town meetings so large they had to be held in the high school auditorium. I am truly embarrassed, truly embarrassed, by the fact that wherever I go in our town, people will come up to me and say, "Ray Fowler, your comments at the Board of Selectmen Meeting were right on," or even, "Ray Fowler, your comments at the Board of Selectmen Meeting were all wrong." I would much rather it be that there were so many people commenting in a meeting that people remember little of what I said, much less know my name. Now, you can agree or disagree with anything or everything I've said tonight, or anytime, but that's exactly my point. Get involved, get active, be a part of the governance of our wonderful town. When you have a fatal illness, as I have, and wondering if each day was to be your last, you start to worry about the state of the world in general. You hope that the world and things of it would be better than when you started, than when you began. A better place for our children and for our grandchildren. The only way to do that is involvement. Getting in there and doing their part to ensure that the world, the country, and indeed your town is a better place. Government is not a spectator sport. My time is rapidly coming to an end. Therefore, I encourage, indeed I plead, that all citizens of North Haven become active participants in the governance of our town. Come out to these meetings, speak your mind, volunteer for boards and commissions, run for office even. Let your voice be heard and make our town the place we, the people, want it to be. In case anyone is wondering, I'm not trying to push anyone over the bar. Indeed, and in fact, I am trying to raise that bar, make it more difficult to get over, to try and hope that common sense and good judgment will replace apathy and indifference. That seems to prevail today. North Haven is a great town, but it's not so great that there is not an abundance of growth and opportunity to be held. The bright future of our town is not dependent on any administration or any political party, but rests on the involvement and the participation of every single citizen. Oh, yeah, one more thing. Over the years attending these Board of Selectmen Meetings, I have openly and actively supported any administration when I thought they were right, openly and actively opposed any administration when I thought they were wrong. But I want one thing known: Never, never, ever did I ever lose respect for any selectman. I realize it's a damn tough job, and my respect is especially true of the three selectmen here today. All that being said, in my final farewell, I wish you all well, good health, and unbounded happiness. Happy New Year. Goodbye.
Thank you, Raymond. Mr. Katz.
Right, I think you're wrong about one thing, which is, and that is that this will be, I don't believe this will be your last time for us. I think you maybe even said that last year, but, so I'm counting on, I'm counting on it, not, you know, that's the one thing that, but you're right too, you know, and the other thing that, you know, the other thing I think that you're clearly right about is, is that I'm very happy, you know, that you're here tonight and all the other people, you know, are here tonight to participate, and I think it's one of the downsides to the technology is people watch us at home, you know, but don't come and don't interact, and I very, I know all three of us very much appreciate the, the fact that people do come, you know, to these meetings and town meetings and interact, but I, I really think you're wrong about this being your last time, so. But I know you've done it, you know, you continue to struggle, but I'm counting on, I'm counting on you being here again. But thank you.
Sherman Katscher would drive. I want to make a comment about something Ray said, uh, about Board of Education budget and so on. Money doesn't always solve problems. When I moved into town fifty-five years ago, one of the criteria we used was the Board of Education, education, I'm sorry, the, the school system. At that time, we were among the top ten in the state. We were an outstanding school system. I researched every year where North Haven is. I, I hate to say we are at a low right now. If you research our standing among the hundred and sixty towns in Connecticut, you'll find that we do not fare very well. You can make your own decision on why. One of the things I want to mention with litter around town, especially on the green, and it's not so much now because it's gotten cold, but people that sit on the green sometimes leave their cups and trash. This is one of our showcase, we spend a lot of time and money. We have sometimes five and six men working on that green to make it presentable and beautiful. Uh, you want to leave your trash there, you're going to pay for it. Pay for it and clean- Pay for it in cleaning. People throwing trash out of their car windows and parking lots, this is our town. You know, if you see someone, I've gone up to people and told them that they should not have thrown that piece of trash, you know, out of their car window. They don't like it. I don't care if they don't like it, I'm going to tell them. I also tell them when they park in handicapped spaces without the handicap sign. Question about, we take very good care of town property, the lawns, the greens, the ball fields, we trim them, we fertilize them, we weed, kill them, and so on. But there's little feeling on the part of the town when it comes to some of the cul-de-sacs in town that have green grass on them. I'm one of them, and we fight the weeds that come in from those cul-de-sacs. And I think that they should get the same treatment as any town property, because it is town property, not just the cutting, it should also be cared for a little bit more Not going to talk about very much more.
Sherman, you know, you know, I've agreed on that topic with the trash. It's just like when I go for a walk, you know, there's just trash, like on everybody's lawn from people throwing stuff out the windows. It's just horrible. Just like it's so, such a disrespect for the people who, you know, are in town or live here, for people to do that. And I just don't understand why, you know, people, why people do that. And I think you're exactly right, you know, in terms of littering out, you know.
I used to go have a job where I traveled, excuse me, I traveled to many cities and states, and I was in a state, a town in Virginia. Beautiful town, Richmond. It was clean. There wasn't a piece of scrap of paper anywhere. And I said to the gentleman that was driving me, I asked him, "How do they keep it so clean?" He said, "If we see someone throw something out of the window of a car, we report the license number to the police and the police go after them." So citizens do take concern in the way their town looks. Oh, the other thing I want to ask you, Mike, I tried to get some information on the drain system for Sherwood Drive, and you gave me information back in October that it was going to go out to bid and start in November and be finished by March. And when I asked the person in charge about, because it hadn't gone out to bid in November, I asked whether it was going to go out and... The answer that I got, I'll tell you privately, not publicly.
Okay.
Do you have any information on what's going on?
Yes, I met with him yesterday and told him to put out the bid. So we're still on track to pave Sherwood Drive. But apparently, he's been talking to some of your residents who were either debating the plan, I'm not quite sure, so I just said to him, "Put it out."
I thought the plan was set.
Well, there was some suggestion, shall we say, that he, the individual you're talking about, said, "This is the plan and this is it." So I told him yesterday, "Put it out to bid."
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
It's going out to bid.
Mike, I will thank you. Mike, you still thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Very good.
Charlie Wickline, Hartford Turnpike. I didn't know you loved me. Really?
What's it say?
It says, "I love you." With your picture.
And I love all the citizens.
How's it matter? I really didn't think I was that lovable. Well, since you love me, perhaps I'll answer this question. Would you just waste ten million dollars on a failed program to save the volunteer fire department?
Explain.
Well, I roughly broke it down. We spent ten million on rehabbing and overhauling the volunteer stations. And I will quote, "That was to attract and retain firefighters. One of the main reasons that was done." I got tired of watching things on television, but I remember a couple of times you said we would respond to the request to put food in the stations for the firefighters, so we did that. Here's another picture of you. And I can quote, "We hired a new training officer for the fire department because additional personnel were training volunteer firefighters." And I don't think any of that actually happened.
Well, it has happened. It did happen.
Yes.
So what's your point?
That we wasted ten million dollars.
How would, how would we have wasted ten million dollars?
About ten million dollars to achieve a goal of retaining and attracting volunteer firefighters, but we did not do that.
Where do you get the ten million dollars from?
What, we spent fourteen million on the fire remodeling package on the fire station?
No.
No, how much did we spend?
Nine million, two hundred and forty-seven thousand.
Okay, and how much went to the volunteer stations?
So are you, are you suggesting here that we're closing the Monoise Station?
No, we're not talking about the Monoise Station.
What are you talking about?
We went from more than one hundred volunteer firefighters to twenty, and I have a document proving that.
That has nothing to do with renovating the stations.
Well, yes.
Did you watch the Fire Commission meeting? Did you hear the captain of the Monoise Volunteer Fire Department explain why there's not going to be the volunteers there anymore? Did you hear that? Because if you did, it would have nothing to do with what you're talking about right now.
I'm talking about we went from one hundred to twenty volunteer firefighters.
So do you know the reasons why?
Well, oh, there's a long list I read from several people on how society has changed. People are too busy to volunteer, things like that. But we're not talking about that. Those are all legitimate reasons, and I understand.
Well, those are the reasons.
Well, then, why did we spend all this money trying to attack, I'm sorry, retain and attract volunteer firefighters?
We did not spend ten million dollars...
All right, so we, and I made a mistake, we spent...
You made a big mistake.
Seven million dollars?
Nowhere near that. That, that rationale has nothing to do with the demise of the volunteer firefighters. Now, I'm taking a hard-line approach to that and this issue, because you've misrepresented the facts. And let me tell you what the facts are, that years ago, there was over a hundred and fifty volunteer firefighters here. Because of the stress of the job, because of the fact there's no pay, because of the fact there's only two hundred dollars a month pension, now it's three hundred, that they would get after all those years of service, because of the fact that they have full-time jobs, and because of the fact there is tremendous training to remain certified as a volunteer firefighter, because of the fact that there's more calls for service, highway accidents, fatalities, fires, the volunteers can't do it anymore. They have decided it's too much. And now, with the sad passing of one of our firefighters who died in the line of duty, we have families saying to volunteer firefighters who are serving, "Do you really want to do this anymore?" Spouses and children. So please don't associate that we've lost volunteers and spent ten million dollars for that, because you're misrepresenting the facts. We can't, this is a, if you did some homework, you would have discovered and learned that it's a, it's a nationwide problem with volunteers. There are cities and towns right now who are all volunteer, that they may not be able to have a volunteer firefighter, and they're really, they're really struggling right now to determine what the solution is. So let me repeat. We didn't spend ten million dollars to recruit fire, volunteer firefighters. The recruiting aspect of it was to, yes, put food in there, water, snacks when they're there. The cost of that was, was minimal. What we did was we tried to recruit volunteer firefighters through the school system. We had a fire training facility underwritten by Quinnipiac University to try to attract volunteer firefighters. Quinnipiac paid ninety percent of that. Now what we're doing is we're adding more firefighters. Let's go back to what Mr. Fowler said about public safety. We're adding firefighters. We've added police officers because of what Mr. Fowler said, the economic development. And we're probably still behind in that. The volunteer firefighter demise is because they can't do it anymore, and we understand it. It's a tremendous strain on a family life for no compensation when they've got full-time jobs and they're held to standards on response times that they can't meet, because they may be coming from another job, they may have a tough time getting out of their place of employment. Those are the facts.
You done lecturing?
Well, I'm...
No, yes or no?
I'm done. Yes, go right ahead.
Okay. I apologize if I got the numbers wrong, but those were direct quotes from town meetings. The money was spent to help attract and retain volunteer firefighters.
You misinterpreted. We didn't spend ten million dollars to attract volunteer firefighters.
Well, we spent something, because one of the main reasons for the remodeling of all the fire stations, discounting the one down here, was to attract and retain volunteer firefighters.
The firefighters were outdated.
Repeated endlessly by the chief and the chairman of the Fire Commission.
The fire stations were outdated. They weren't up to code, many of them.
I agree.
So that, that was the main reason.
That was the main reason.
Not, not to attract more volunteers, yeah, we would have hoped.
That's one of the reasons we did.
So, but you just made a statement, "We spent ten million dollars to attract volunteers."
You're repeating yourself. I also, right here, we hired a training officer, you're, we went through this, right down there, to help attract and retain volunteer firefighters.
And the training officer was involved with the training to train the volunteer firefighters. But it goes back to what I just said, that takes a tremendous personal commitment on personal time at night that some of the volunteers couldn't do anymore.
You don't think I know guys that worked that were volunteer firefighters?
Well, you may, but...
I know, I did.
But you might want to watch the Fire Commission meeting when you see the Captain Angel explain all the reasons why.
I know why. They tell me why.
Well, why did you say ten million dollars then?
Oh, you keep changing the subject.
No, that's, you brought the subject up.
So, the next question is, since there's, we're down to twenty firefighters, would you consider closing the fire station on Ridge Road and moving it over to the Monoise Station, since it's now going to be, only have the two firefighters in it? We can solidify sort of one station if they want?
We're never going to close Ridge Road Fire Station, because that's where, there's still volunteers there.
Why not move them over to Monoise?
Because Monoise has paid firefighters now.
Well, there aren't, there are three bays, three garage bays at that fire station.
So was that, Monoise is a paid station, it's fully functional.
Aren't there three bays, three garage bays for fire trucks at that station?
But there's bays there, yes.
So why don't we just use those two bays?
There's only two at Monoise. There's two bays at Monoise.
So you have paid firefighters there now.
I know.
Why would we, why would we close Ridge Road and then put that portion of town, a very important portion of town, in jeopardy with, for response times without having a volunteer station there?
I'm trying to go for a smaller government, that's all.
But you're going against what Mr. Fowler just said about public safety.
Well, you're hiring firefighters nonstop, so...
So you want, you don't want, you, you want a smaller government with fewer public safety officials?
No, you can hire fewer firefighters. I don't say close the buildings, or we don't have the heat and cool and insurance and all that.
We need the Ridge Road Fire, it, it has a fully-staffed volunteer, that's one station, and northeast right now is the other one, at least for now, but the Ridge Road volunteers are still very active there. Monoise, the volunteers said, "We can't do it anymore."
Okay, I would like to see an Apple store come to town.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you. I love all this...
You should have, do you want me to autograph this?
Sure, you can autograph, here's a pen. Take the pen, autograph it. Thank you.
Long charge.
Thank you.
You go?
No, you got it.
Yeah, go ahead, I'll go.
Thank you.
Nancy Barrett, Christopher Drive, I just have a couple of quick questions and then a suggestion. So, Mr. Frida, you had mentioned your State of the Town address. Could you please just mention to the, to the public where and when that will be?
So I'm not sure of the date, because the chamber is hosting, it's not my event, I'm invited to speak, so...
Now, if you happen to know when that might be?
I will let you know in a minute.
Sure.
But, but the venue, I believe, is at Quinnipiac University, so...
Okay.
And you need to go to the Quinnipiac Chamber website to register if, if anybody is planning on attending.
And you can attend virtually?
I'm not sure.
But it's all through the Quinnip, I'm not sure, it's through their website.
So Nancy, this is different than our usual economic development breakfast. This is, this is totally separate.
Sure.
I'm invited by the chamber to deliver a State of the Union. The chamber members are invited to attend as businesses, and so I'm speaking in front of the business community, but it's not the North Haven, it's not a Mike Frida economic development breakfast.
Isaac.
I believe it's February twenty-fourth.
And that will be in addition to the economic development breakfast, you'll be having that in spring?
No, probably not, because it's too close, so we're going to go with this, so, because it's a...
So this will be taking place?
I would say so, yeah.
Okay, all right. My second point is regarding the, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant to update Bailey Road baseball field. So one thing that I've noticed, and I'm sure many people that drive up and down Bailey Road, is that along, where the cars can park perpendicular to Bailey Road, just, just along the baseball field, there are some kind of a wooden, you know, big logs that kind of mark where the, the car should stop. And they had some tacky-looking, almost like volleyball netting all along there to prevent the balls from the baseball field from rolling out onto Bailey Road. So if they are going to do something with this particular field, I would just hope that they'd also do something and provide some sort of a, you know, a real fence along that, that line, to both protect the cars that are parked there, but also to protect the cars and people that are on Bailey Road. Sorry, just a second.
Okay.
And again, regarding the, both the bands, the town meeting for the bandstand and the updated playgrounds behind the rec center, certainly my kids played at that rec center many times when we'd go for swim lessons and various events at the rec center. But just to be clear, the daycare center at the rec center is no more, right? There is no longer a daycare center there?
Yeah, that's been out for a couple of years, yeah.
It's been out, so, and that's really who, who use that kind of on a regular basis, but, but other people use it.
Yeah, I mean, summer camps, the people, kids use it, you know, so it's open to the public, so, yeah, anybody, anybody can use it.
So it's still, okay. Okay, and then my last point takes a little bit to tee up here, but this is in response to the recent announcement that was just in the press about the Monoise volunteer program here in, volunteer fire program here in North Haven that has been terminated, and the Monoise Firehouse has been made exclusively a career firehouse. For the last couple of years, it's been a hybrid house that housed both career firefighters as well as the volunteer fire department. And I'd like to make a suggestion that might lead to an increase in our volunteer firefighters, and so I ask you to just bear with me while I set this up. So I completely agree with Mr. Frida. The decrease in, in number of volunteer firemen across our state is, is a real problem, and as you mentioned, it's an even bigger problem in those towns that are exclusively volunteer in nature. We are very fortunate here in North Haven to have both career firefighters as well as volunteer firefighters. And we do offer payment for newly hired cadets to go to the police and fire academy to, to obtain their, their training. We also offer police and firemen pension and benefits for longevity. We pay for CERT training. We've trained over a hundred individuals in our town, and I think we've retained fifty of those hundred. We allocate each year about ten thousand dollars for volunteer firefighter recruitment. We offer volunteer pension plans and tax abatements. We support a Fire Explorer program, which is an initiative that started just, I think, about a year ago, in order to expose high school students one night a week to, to the fire department and the things that career firefighters do. But in the end, those efforts do not attract the people that we really want to become volunteer firefighters. Those are the people in their early to mid twenties who don't own property, they might own cars, so tax abatements really wouldn't be a big initiative or a big incentive for them, and certainly pension plans wouldn't. And, and really, for people in their, in their early twenties, they're not going to have the out... the out-of-pocket funds in order to pay for the certification requirements to become a volunteer firefighter. So for those that don't know, all firefighters in North Haven have to obtain the firefighter one certification, and that includes hazmat operational level training. And Gateway offers a course that costs about $1,800 plus an additional $250 for books and materials. So let's, let's call it $2,000. So I was wondering if we could take the $10,000 that we've been allocating each year in the budget for trying to recruit different people to our, to our volunteer program and instead set that aside and basically subsidize this $2,000 upfront cost with the assurance that if they do pass and become certified, they have to both take a written exam and a practical exam, if they pass, that they'd be willing to join our force. So five times 2,000 apiece, that's $10,000. That could result in adding five people to our volunteer program each year. And, and I understand there's some risk associated with that. They might not pass, they, hopefully, if they do pass and they sign something, they would in fact join the volunteer program. But I just think that we've set aside this money, the last two years, we've only spent about half of it, and I just think that this might give us a little bit more bang for our buck. So what does this board think about that?
Well, I mean, it's got to, it's got to be run through the fire department first for the recommendations, so...
Oh, of course, of course, of course. And, and the board of finance.
Is the $10,000 you're talking about, the volunteer allocation, is that what you're talking about, or?
Well, it's, it's currently in the fire department budget for volunteer recruitment. And they've only spent in the last two years, you know, $5,000 or $6,000 of it. And so, and obviously, we haven't had, you know, this pipeline established. So I just wondered, again, thinking about whom we might want to be bringing in and what would be, you know, real incentives for them, I think that $2,000 out-of-pocket is, is a disincentive.
Well, we'll talk to the fire department.
Sure. Well, again, I, I wanted to run this past this board. I will certainly mention it to the fire chiefs and certainly to the board of finance to, for their consideration. I, I certainly am not trying to micromanage the fire department at all. But again, this is something that I think has an impact in our overall safety of our, our town, and, and I think, again, in terms of getting this bang for our tax dollars, this might be another reason.
You know, there was a recent story, I think on NBC News, about a town in Connecticut that they're telling the residents that they, they're not going to be able to respond to 911 calls. They're going to have to outsource it somehow because they're all volunteer. So, and this is a real problem, as I mentioned earlier, and you know this because you've sat in, in the fire commission meetings on the board of finance.
I certainly have, I certainly have. And I've done my homework, that's for sure.
And you've, you've heard the chief's presentations at the workshop sessions. So this is a pattern that's been going on for several years now. And, and when Angel, I wasn't at the meeting, but when Angel, who was the captain of Monowies, laid out all the issues, he's talking from a firsthand standpoint, firsthand standpoint of the, the problems they have in being a volunteer. So, but look, to your point, we'll talk to the fire department and, and, well, you know, we'll take any suggestions we can to stable, at the very least stabilize what we have right now.
Yes, exactly. And I, I think retention is certainly one initiative, trying to keep what we have. And again, I think that that, that has to be targeted towards the volunteers that we currently have. But in terms of bringing in new volunteers, preferably those over 21 that, you know, both have the physical stamina, because it's a very demanding job, either as a volunteer or as a career firefighter, but also the dedication to, to this particular service to our community, I think is something that we could encourage.
And as you know from the budget presentations, I think one of the issues has been that volunteers, you know, still want to be firefighters and then become paid firefighters in other departments. So we've actually lost, you know, volunteers, not to, you know, not just losing them, period, they're actually becoming paid firefighters.
Sure.
So that's been one of the things that have further, I think, you know, eroded it. But, yeah, I think the place as well, you know, which you may, you know, which obviously, beside, you know, here or the board of finance, is the fire commission itself. Maybe present that idea to them.
Absolutely. Yeah, again, I, as I said, I wanted to present this idea to this board just to get your thoughts, and certainly I...
Well, I think you've seen actually people still being able to volunteer, and maybe it fits into all the other complications, like you said, that's what the, you know, the CERT team there, and the fact that we have so many volunteers there that maybe, which never existed, which never existed in the, in the, in the past, which I think actually...
But the chief has also had difficulty hiring career firefighters. And I think he's anticipating a few retirements over the next year or two. So there, there are going to be spots opening up, and so there is that pipeline from the volunteer program into the career program.
If you want to be a career.
If, if that's what they want, that's still...
Yeah, we've done that. We've hired volunteers.
Absolutely, of course.
But, but the other part of the volunteers is, a lot of them have aged out. And then, you know, they've served, then when they're, when they age out, the ability to attract younger people is very difficult to be a volunteer firefighter.
Well, I think this is what Nancy is saying because I would be, I think she has an interesting idea about offering the financial help. A lot of folks listening might not be aware how much it costs to pay for the training that you need to be eligible, to become a, a, a volunteer firefighter. I'd be interested in knowing how many folks show up at the headquarters to inquire about volunteering, and when they learn the, the fee that they have to put up front, say, "Ugh, I don't have that," you know, and, and...
And that's the fear.
So maybe that is, it's those folks that her idea could maybe grasp into the, you know?
All right, we'll, we'll talk to the fire chief, and so...
Because it, it's a relatively small amount of, of money to subsidize that for the town, but it's a lot of money maybe for a 21-year-old. And it may, so I, I, you know, I think that would be a good question if you do go to the fire commission with this idea, is ask the chief, have you had folks say, "Oh, I didn't know there was that, you know, money required upfront," and, and leave? You know, that, that would be interesting to know, and whether or not the idea would help attract, attract more. But I do, you know, I understand what, what the chief at Monowies said at the fire commission meeting about, you know, the, the declining numbers. Although, you know, when we had 150 volunteers in the heyday of the volunteer program, you know, they had full-time jobs too, you know? It's not like having a full-time job and being a volunteer is something new. But some folks with the, you know, economic situation have more than just one job. So I understand the, the differences that have impacted the number of volunteers. But I think her idea is certainly worth looking into as, as far as attracting those young folks that, that are discouraged by the amount of money.
We'll take a look at it.
Yeah, so thank you for the, for coming to us. There's no harm in starting here, but, yeah, why not? Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Nancy.
All right, very good. Bill?
Before I, and before, before I start, I'd just like to say with the firehouses, when we spent that money bonding on those firehouses, we did put sleeping quarters in all those houses. So at, by having those, we're having a problem with the volunteers, all right? We went to put pay in, guys, and we already had that money spent. We don't have to go out and spend more money to Monowies, Northeast, or the West Ridge at this time. So it's set up ahead of time, which is very, very helpful. Because we waited now, the cost to rebuild Monowies with the sleeping quarters in would have been 10 times more than what we spent prior. So that's, that's a good thing. The other thing is, the meeting come up on the 27th on the, with Bandstand?
Yes.
Screen and the, we got Solar, I call it Solar Park, really. And I didn't know about that. I didn't see that until I just looked at the agenda for tonight. Now, taxation is, we're going to get, what, $8,000 here, I think?
$8,650, I think it is, yeah.
For, for, for 20 years, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Now what happens after that? We gain anything off that property?
No, we have nothing to do with the property. We gain nothing. Maybe 20 years from now, there'll be, as time goes on, Bill, the infrastructure changes, the technology changes, they reinvest more, maybe 20 years from now, there'll be a renewal of the pilot, which he never is here at the time, so...
Okay, now on the other one, that's on the other side of the cemetery, in Milltown Avenue.
Right.
What do we, what do we gain off that? That's been up there about three years?
Twenty, $26,000 a year.
$26,000?
It's a, it's a larger facility.
All right, so this one here is the mini one. I just drove by there. I guess that's at the end of Rock River and Mill, up where they have the farm field up in that area?
Yeah.
All right.
The, the agreement here that was in our packet talks about at the end of the lease, which is, the lease is between the solar company and, and the arch diocese, I assume. There's, there's, I don't know if you read the whole thing, that talks about it being restored back to its original state.
Yeah, so that's a, that's, that could be, but...
So that would go back, is that taxable land, even though it's a church hold or...
Yeah, as I mentioned earlier, Bill, we're getting $1,800 a year in taxes. I mentioned that earlier here, so...
For the entire 122 acre parcel, or just the nine acre?
I think it's just the nine acres, so...
Because the nine acres is part, a parcel of a bigger, 122 acre. Yeah, they own a lot of land up there.
They do.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think 20 years from now, the technology may change in terms of the solar, efficiencies of solar panels, so maybe that is the useful life of these panels and they end up putting, you know, newer, different equipment in it.
Yeah.
Makes more sense, and so I can't, you know, opposed to going back to, you know, something that, you know, that maybe is still not going to be, wanted to be used by the diocese, so...
Yeah.
It's hard to say what happens 20 years from now.
I think there's like about 25-year life they put on those.
Yeah, I think when you put them on your house, I think you're exactly right.
Yeah, yeah. The other thing is, the new bandstand coming, which would be very nice, all right? Now, in the past, we used that trailer for like other things in town, like Memorial Day parade. What will be used for that? Are we going to hang onto the trailer?
Yes. Yeah, the trailer will still be for the parades. St. Teresa Church uses it, Bill, for their carnival. So we'll still have it, but it was my idea and goal to improve the aesthetics of the green by having a permanent bandstand versus that. And then, you know, the other thing about the showmobile, which I was always concerned with, some of the band members, you know, they have to go up those steps, those are precarious steps, go down the steps. And the classics are, as an example, they're all like in early 80s and early 80s, those performers. So I was always in the back of my mind was wondering if that was a liability coming up and down, so... But to answer your question, we're still going to have the showmobile.
All right. One other thing I'd like to see added on that is, where it's going in the same places, all right?
Yeah.
On the backside of that, seeing we're investing a lot of money, there's some type of guard rail, wooden type, if a vehicle comes off the road, it's not going to get into that building and do a lot of damage to it.
All right, that's a good point. We just had, I had a meeting here this morning with the state DOT and the state police regarding traffic in town and upgrades. Now, that's the state road, that's Route 103.
Right.
So maybe, maybe we can convince the state to put that guard rail there.
Yeah, because the way people drive, because we're center of town now, you know, it'd be very easy for somebody to come off, up over that curb.
Yeah.
And take out the bandstand.
I think it's a good point. I, I, so we'll take a look at that.
It's a sharp bend by, by the congregational church.
There's open lines, so, you know.
Yeah, there's been accidents there.
That'd be good.
All right.
Take a look at that.
You're going to be in your same place at the concert?
Yeah, we usually are, yeah, we usually are. I'm just waiting for the schedule so I can book around it.
You're going to like it, Bill. I said earlier, Vatic concerts and, and people love these concerts, they really do.
Yeah.
We're going to go beyond, we're going to go into the first week of September this year.
Wow.
And I'm trying to see if we can start a week earlier, too.
Yeah. You know, the other thing is too, the, like, we have the lighting up there.
Right.
Like, on the stage, we've got more lighting up there than what we have now, and with the gazebo being lit up for walkways and everything. The only other thing we have to take a look at is probably the lampposts up there, lighting, they should be changed. And also off the front of this new stage, when the concerts are over, or any event that we use it for, especially when you get into August, September, to have some type of lighting that could be flipped on to light up the green.
Yeah, I agree.
When people are excited.
And you've brought this up before, and I totally agree with you, because particularly in the middle of August, it does get dark there.
Yes.
So that is something we're going to do, Bill.
In conjunction with the stage itself, yeah.
Yes, yes, yep.
Okay, I'm just waiting to see a picture of it, so...
And I may have said it before, I have to give you the credit for coming up with the idea about the guardrails on the cement structure and on the gazebo.
Yeah.
It was you that brought that to my attention, and we did it.
I like, I like your idea about getting on the stage itself in the back, people to get up and down instead of the trailer.
Okay.
You must learn from me.
I learned a lot from you, Bill, so thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, thanks. All right, ladies and gentlemen, seeing no other public comment, motion to adjourn.